Enough.
Play over.
Enough.
All right, I'm gonna call the, uh, what'd it say, Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, Select Board Meeting, uh, afternoon edition, uh, to order. So, uh, we're gonna start with, uh, a quick announcement and then we'll get into some, uh, recognitions and some other items we have here. I evidently opened the wrong agenda. Um, the announcement I have is the, uh, revised, there we go. Yeah, uh, then we postponed this meeting because of the, uh, weather and we have the first announcement is comedy show at Niagara Coffee House. And that is happening, um, there with just a moment.
New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve, there we go, thank you. Uh, New Year's Eve, seven thirty, Niagara Coffee House, uh, tickets at Eventbrite or at The Door. Uh, stand-up comedy, I'd encourage everybody to attend, it, uh, was it, do we do this last year? Or is this the first year at work?
They did the stand-up last year.
I can't recall either, but it's a usually good event, good place, uh, so encourage everybody to attend. All right, next item up, we have, uh, the Chiefs, we'll start with that, first I'm gonna start by thanking the Chiefs and Chief, uh, Barrett, Boy, uh, Jim McKay, you know, Mike, Karen, everybody who worked on the storm, it was unbelievable, it kind of worked that went in on it. And our state legislatures who came through for us too, I, I know that, I heard Chief, you're on the phone as our state senator is driving her children to work, to school. So, there has been open and a lot of conversation with, uh, both state reps and our state senator and they were helpful. But please, go ahead.
Uh, well, great, thanks for having me tonight, uh, today, that's weird.
Yeah, tell me about it.
So, um, the storm on Monday, um, I think it, uh, caught a lot of people off guard, uh, we had some preparation, uh, before, but never expected what we got. Um, you know, we were hit as hard as most of the coastal communities, we were compared to situ, uh, where we're nowhere near there, so, um, this again was an unbelievable response by all town departments, fire, police, DPW, building and wire inspectors, town hall, uh, employees, and it took everybody to get this done. Um, so our first call came at five twenty-two AM and the last call was eleven o'clock that night. Um, we got a quick reprieve for about two hours and then the call started coming in for the power gets restored. So there's always calls when you lose power and then there's calls when the power gets back. Um, at the peak of the storm, we had ninety-four percent of mills was without power. That's a huge number, in my twenty-six years, I don't think we've ever seen it get past thirty or forty percent, so to have ninety-four percent was quite a bit. Um, that included, I mean, just buildings, our schools, uh, our town center, so most of our businesses in town were also shut down. Um, we responded to eighty-six calls for sort of service in that time period. That was included trees down, wires down, electric providers, house services, et cetera. And again, when I say we, this is police, fire, DPW, building, all, and we, we all had respond to all of these. On this side, we had five medicals, two, we had a lot of town where we provided other communities with help, we had two mutually fire responses during this period where we weren't running around. We had eight homes, uh, that had trees on them, two were uninhabitable where the people actually had finds and shelters somewhere else. We had thirteen roads that were shut down, um, we had twenty-eight responses to carbon monoxide alarms and then we assisted fifteen residents with flooded basements. Um, usually when you hear carbon monoxide alarms, you think, oh, it's just a false alarm, unfortunately, most of these were true, a lot of them came from generators. They like put generators under the deck and then it starts to fill the house up, the alarms come in and then we show up. Um, we also had a few, uh, MBAs where people would drive through the cones that said, please don't drive through in the wood and they would hit trees. Um, we spoke to several residents about walking on high-power lines, that we don't know that they're dead, if we're staying away, you should stay away. Um, but the good news is, after all of that, currently, uh, as of, of ten minutes ago, we are down to ten residents without power. A majority of those are due to they need to have electricians come in, so EverSource has restored the power to a point now the electricians need to come in. That means the house service has been ripped off, we have a couple where their, uh, neutrals and grounds have been broken, so this work that needs to be done before the full restoration is over. Um, and then all roads have been reopened, which is a big deal. And again, when I say police, fire, DPW, it was that all three of us would arrive on these calls and everybody would kind of kick in. There would probably be thirty roads that were shut down if it wasn't for the quick response of police and DPW as well as us. Usually we'd arrive, assess, and then start doing work, DPW was great with machines, we'd get the stuff off the road, get that road open, move on to the next one. Um, again, when you have eighty-six calls for service, you know, I thought it's a lot. Uh, the city of Framingham did a hundred, now there, the city of, however, Millis we did eight, and that's, that's being generous. We were, we probably missed a few there that we could probably add to it. Um, so with the only, the one road shut down right now that we, well, all the roads are open, we just got confirmation. So we're just waiting, we're checking on those residents right now, uh, most of them have a planted place, they have electricians coming out, they have tree services. Um, so we're hoping for everybody to have power back by the end of today or tomorrow, that's the goal. Couple things I just wanted to kind of, uh, talk about real quick is the status of the school during the storm on Monday. I know there's been discussion about it, why didn't they get let out, why didn't they go in, all of that. Chief of Fire was in on the conversations with the school and it really was a discussion of what's safer for them and it was almost like a shelter in place. They were there, they were safe, are, those buildings are really safe, um, so it was better to leave them there until we could really get through the bulk of it. But we did, we had a lull right about two to four where the school, uh, was dismissed, you were sent home, uh, and then it kicked back up three, four, five o'clock. Uh, so there was a long discussion about it with the school system. Uh, and then the same thing, we joked about four AM the next morning, um, it's great to talk to the school superintendent at four AM and say, what are we doing today? And then putting the pressure on Senator Roush to answer the phone and say, what are we doing without power? Um, and that decision was made, the school didn't have a generator, they didn't have power, there was no way for them to, you know, hold classes, so it was decided to have the school closed for the day. Um, town hall status, again, Mike and Karen, we've had discussions about, is it open, is it closed? And with kind of the half power for the generator, the decision was made to stay closed. You know, there were some concerns that this is our emergency shelter, how do we shut it down? Well, we're shut down for work, we're not shut down for shelter. The gym is outfitted with all the plugs and everything, uh, resource off of the generator. So if we wanted the town employees to go in there and work, they would have plenty of power. For our shelter, it would have been open and fine, just for public work and stuff, that's why it's shut. Yeah, uh, EverSource, that's a, a whole different thing. Um, we have had issues with EverSource in the past and we've addressed them and we've had two years of pretty good responses from them where we felt like we were on the up and up. Usually before a storm like this, I will get an email from EverSource saying, this is when the center is gonna go up, this is who you're the contact, this will be your liaison, none of that ever happens. So then, when we started having the big outages, we started making the phone calls and nobody wants to return phone calls. So that just kind of kicks it up a little bit more, cause now, not only are we not getting a response, we're not getting any communication either. Um, so we started to run it up the flat pole, Mike made some calls, we got ahold of some state representatives and the senator. Um, and I started making calls and we were able to get a response, they didn't like our communication, to the point that they chose a liaison, if not, to sit at the fire station and kind of be the person who would yes me to death. Um, unfortunately, that gentleman was tied to a chair and wasn't allowed to leave until we got follow-back, so, um, we, we made sure he stayed, um, and it was good because, you know, to them, we're not a big deal, I hate saying that, and they tell us this all the time, oh, you're three thousand, four thousand users. It's, you know, that's community over here and I said, well, for us, it's a big deal, ninety-four percent is a huge number. Um, and that's when the tough discussions started to happen, is that I don't care where we're at, but we have to do something. And to have our whole town center with no power and have no response was really frustrating. So, that night in the Tuesday, yesterday morning, where we just had no movement, was just unacceptable. Um, you know, so we put a lot of pressure on them, uh, me and the chief, uh, we use social media, uh, we encouraged the residents, follow, complain, continue to call and complain. They got to hear it from the residents and the, uh, statement that was given back to me was, your noise is being heard. So, whatever we were doing pressure-wise, EverSource was hearing it, we started to see some results. Now, the big problem is, it's EverSource administration that we're frustrated with. EverSource workforce was unbelievable, like, when they arrived, we saw things that I've never seen. Dover Road was a, uh, amount of damage that we thought would take weeks to get back up. There were thirteen bucket trucks in the air and they had it done in about three hours, so it was pretty impressive to see. Most of them were from out of town, we had a lot of, uh, New Jersey, Cleveland, a lot of people came up, somebody was aware the storm was coming and they cried for it. So it was really good to see, so that was our frustrating part and we're definitely gonna have longer discussions with them, so it's after this. Uh, because communication is the biggest thing, you gotta tell us or not tell us, I said, just park me a truck so I can tell people EverSource's here, we didn't even have that. Uh, so that was frustrating part. Um, and again, just to thank Mike, uh, Karen, Senator Roush, Chief of Fire, Jim McKay, Jim Staff, all the police officers. Because again, if it wasn't for everybody, this, this would have gone really bad, you know, and we're, it's weird, Medway, they only had like six percent out, Medfield, eight or ten percent out, we were ninety-four. So for us, it was a big deal, um, and I think we handled it best we could and got a lot of stuff done in a few days. You know, I'm very proud of how Mills responded, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to basically, uh, follow up with the chief's comments and say that, um, I was very impressed with, uh, the response from the fire and police and DPW, they were all over this. Um, I was, you know, in communication, um, at least every couple of hours with the fire chief, um, through most of the critical hours of this and, uh, and those departments did a great job and, um, special thanks to the fire chief, cause they know a lot of pressure is on his shoulders as the director of emergency management during this situation. And, um, uh, you know, the chief's correct that, you know, we did have some conversations with, um, Senator Roush and our representatives and I, I do think that helped. Um, definitely helped get some attention, um, and I know Aaron reached out as well on a few text messages, so that, that was great. Um, so, just to thank you to all the town, um, employees and, uh, uh, that worked to restore power to the town and make sure we could get the citizens back online as quickly as possible.
It's still unfortunate that it took that, you know, we shouldn't have to go to that level to just get some power restored.
Just wanted to add too, and obviously thank you to, to everybody that worked so hard during it, it really is impressive to, to sit here, um, in our office and watch what holds on in this town and how people come together, it's always impressive to me and honestly, we're very lucky. Um, but beyond that, trying to get communication out to the public was interesting. Um, typically, we do it through Facebook posts and on the website, well, if people don't have power, then how are you getting information to them? So, uh, of, of course, we're right in the process of transitioning from our current SWIFT reach nine-one-one to what's called the Rave system. And that's that phone call that you get, so once you sign up, you put your number in, you get, um, someone telling you, maybe me, um, information on anything, it could be anything, it's emergency situations or brings, and I think that does get through to quite a few people, but what I want to do, um, shortly, as we're moving to rave, is really advertise it again on Facebook and say, look, if we're ever in this situation, here is your source of communication, hopefully, I mean, and even, even phone lines, we were having difficulty making phone calls, I was getting no texts. Um, so that is something to really think about too, is how do you get the information to people when you have no technology?
Yeah, and I think that brings up a great point, there was a lot of learning curves we had on this one, because we did, we lost internet, we lost everything, like, we had people stopping at the fire station because their phones weren't working to give them directions, I mean, we were at that level. Uh, the bigger thing was, even in this building and our building, the police building as well, we found, usually we run a generator for about an hour, we get power back.
Yep.
You know, this was almost twenty-four hours and also we found out all the things that don't work in our building, you know, the generator, including my office, including half of his office, including half of the dispatch center. Things we thought we were prepared for didn't work, so this was kind of a good exercise, you know, luckily we made it through, but we learned a lot. You know, we met with Jim from IT about, hey, these are things we need to address and so, at least we're gonna take some of that as well.
We are so, um, at least down to the council and agency with no power, wasn't running, wasn't on generator. So all of a sudden, the water was pouring under the door at the council and agency right at the height of the storm, we're like, wait, what? So fire came over, all this came over and took a portable generator and, and thankfully that worked, but it would have ruined the entire center. Because you don't know until you don't know.
Food pantry was also affected, they had water, they had no power, luckily she caught it quick enough, didn't get any in food and we were able to pump it out. But we forget about these things, like things that should be on the generator. And thanks to Shifan, they'll be moving everything off the ground.
Yeah, I, I, I was very impressed with everything I saw, there was a lot of, I, I saw a lot of the criticism about the school, I think it was absolutely the right decision, I'd go to bed for that any day of the week. It was, um, there was no reason to send those kids home in that weather, they were safer than they were, like you said, and it, it, I, I think it was crazy that anybody's upset about that.
Yeah.
Um, the emergency shelter is in the sixties, in fact, we didn't need the emergency shelter, it was available, didn't need to do it. Um, just the, the criticisms, I think, were unfounded.
Yeah.
I found our state reps and our state senator very responsive, I texted, um, all three of them at one point and, uh, they, they were there, they were working and, um, helping us out, I, I think we found them very responsive. So, um, I, I, I don't think they're posting stuff, I think they're busy working on stuff, so that's the way I saw it. And I was down here, um, on, uh, Tuesday for part of the day and, uh, I saw everybody doing whatever, everything was going on, so it was very busy. So, good job for everything, I was pleased that a lot turned out for us.
Right, and just so people know, although the municipal offices and town hall will close, half the people were here.
Yeah.
Still people here.
They were still here, we still had payroll to do, we still had things to run from here, just because we were close to the public didn't mean that we weren't still working and I think that sometimes people don't realize that, so, um, I mean, that's our job.
My other question though, is there, did you find out anything on why Millis was hit so hard? Was it one big wire or a lot of little wires?
Glad you asked that, so, our biggest, our biggest power feeds come down Dover Road, down Main Street, down Forest Road.
Oh, okay.
So, when the power comes into town, then it gets into the grid system, so they have switches, they can move it all around, from three major routes of that way. Those are the three major routes that had all of their power pulled down. Forest Road had ten poles that had all the power pulled off and Dover Road was eleven, Main Street was six. So all of these were major repairs that had to happen, uh, and once that happened, that's where we saw the big bump. Um, yesterday, we got a thousand in the morning, then yesterday afternoon, we got the majority of people back, Forest Road was later, that was by midnight. So all of those things kind of play into it, we did find some weird things, uh, there are some roads that have fed from other towns, so that when you say, hey, we still have no power here, EverSource can't see that because it comes from, with example Sherwin. We had to give them names of people who were missing and they said, oh, we thought that was in Sherwin, same thing on the North Line. So, that's the weird thing about EverSource, um, you know, I joke with them about, uh, their accountability, uh, which drives me insane to not know where the employees are and what they're doing and when they've left, they have no idea. Uh, that's, just blows my mind for a company that large.
Uh, I just also wanted to say thank you and as a parent that actually had children in the school, I was completely comfortable with that decision and felt it was best for them to be there, they probably would have been panicked in my house anyway. So I think that was really the best call, my children, I know, good question.
And then bring a great point, a lot of kids feel safer in that, those buildings over there, they know, they know, and believe me, it wasn't done late, the chief's fire was in on those phone calls, I will give credit to, uh, Superintendent Mullin. Doesn't mess around, you know, and like I said, he was up at three-thirty, four o'clock with us having those discussions, you know, and, uh, I, we, we really felt like he made the right decision, so.
And I, you have one quick question, if that's okay? Do you think, um, were we just hit so hard because it was kind of a freak storm or what, is there more trimming that needs to be done proactively or?
So a lot of blame is being put, uh, we don't do enough tree trimming, and again, that's not, EverSource only worries about the two feet around their wires, that's all they want, they want, uh, wire integrity, they don't want stuff on it. Some of the stuff that came down was gigantic stuff that was affected by the wind, well off the road, not a town tree. You know, we were having forty, fifty-foot trees come down from in the woods, that's not the town's problem. If these were little things on the side of the road, I would say, yes, we probably should have, this is big, big stuff. The power lines that are up, the thirteen eights that are on top of the pole are very resilient. To have those be just tattered, has to be a very large tree, and like I said, these were multiple poles, this isn't a little tree, so nothing we could have done as a town could have prepared for this at all. And I think the reason we're hit, Millis is in this weird little cone, sometimes it misses us, but when it hits us, you know, we've had the tornadoes, we've had the microbursts. We definitely, we had some of the most intense wind, uh, around, so it's just a weird kind of thing.
The chief is right, we were in a meeting for hazard mitigation, um, and, you know, we commented on how many, how we've had tornadoes and microbursts here and, and that maybe PC, so, he's like, I have never heard of so much in one area, I don't know what it is, it's something about a wind tunnel here, but we do get warmer weather. It's really odd, but yeah. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for being so responsive to our phone calls.
Good job, well done.
Thank you.
Hope some of the staff is getting some rest now, a little bit.
Yep, we've got, I really, uh, there's only a few more families that we have to take care of on the field side. Thank you. Yes.
Sorry, next to the point, oh, did I, oh, we have one more announcement also.
So I've just, uh, just one, one announcement, I want more, uh, actually some very good news.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, we just received a letter from, um, Governor Healy, um, uh, informing us that as part of the, um, fair hair amendment, otherwise known by some as the millionaire's tax, uh, we have been granted as, uh, part of the one hundred million dollars that's been set aside for road improvements as part of that. So for fiscal year twenty-four, the town of Millis is going to be receiving one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, um, for road paving and road repairs, so this will be on top of our chapter nine funds, so additional road work, road work that we'll be able to do, um, uh, this summer, uh, in relation to that. So I just wanted to give you that good news that, that some of those funds are reaching the town.
Great, thank you. All right, the next item up we have is, uh, Chief with a couple of appointments.
Afternoon.
Oh, it's so weird.
This is an easy one. Um, I'm looking to have the town that's ended the appointment of three part-time dispatchers, this is no bust for the towns, the training is covered through, uh, the nine-one-one grant funding and they're just gonna fill the pool of part-time dispatchers to enable the full-timers to get their time off. Um, we have three individuals to feel consideration. First one is Mr. Stephen Smith, uh, he's been in public safety since twenty fifteen with the Raholda Police Department and he's currently employed by Blue Forest Ambulance Service. Uh, the second one is Mr. Nicholas Aliso. Um, he's new to the public safety profession, this is a career path that he wants to take and the natural progression is to start in the dispatch center, so last one is Ms. Emma Slade, she's a graduate of St. Louis College and she interned at the Executive Office of Public Safety in Milford and again, she's gonna be following her career path, um, in alarm. So, with your consideration, invite to appoint, uh, above three individuals, all three appointments are contingent upon passing a physical and a drug screen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, based on the recommendation of the police chief, I am requesting that the board ratify my appointment of Stephen Smith, Nicholas Aliso, and Emma Slade as part-time dispatchers, uh, for the town of Millis, uh, contingent upon the passing of physical and drug screen.
Okay, ready?
I am.
First of all, is it Aliso or Alizo? Well, you spelled it twice differently, I'm just curious. The one in the hole up at the top is a H, you can spell it. Okay, I moved to the board ratifies the town administrator's appointment of Stephen Smith, Nicholas Aliso, and Emma Slade as part-time public safety dispatchers contingent upon passing the physical and drug screen, second.
Chief, we moved in seconded to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Stephen Smith, Nicholas Aliso, and Slade, uh, as part-time public safety dispatchers contingent on the drug screen. And physical, thank you, that's not all that stuff.
I know, Karen.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
They had the physical, so they know.
Okay, so it's contingent, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Health. Headway today. There you go.
Yeah, I'm just here today to ask the, uh, select board to allow the Board of Health to, uh, approve a temporary public health nurse uh, for the time that the, uh, hired public health nurses on, um, yeah. Out, out of the way.
Yeah.
The inten- intended period of time that that would be is probably until the end of February, I would imagine. And we, we know what extra cost of the time, it's just money that's already there for the regular full-time, or part-time, which is a public health nurse that we hired. And the person would be Ann McManus, who has worked for us before in the past during COVID, she's a nurse and a nurse practitioner and she's, uh, proven to do the job very well over the last three years that she's been with us, so.
Chairman, um, based upon the recommendation of the Board of Health and the, uh, Health Director, I'm recommending that the board ratify my appointment of Ann McManus as a temporary public health nurse for up to ten hours per week through March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four to cover for a temporary leave of absence.
I make a motion that the board ratifies the town administrator's appointment of Ann McManus as a temporary public health nurse up to ten hours per week through March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to cover for a temporary leave of absence.
Second.
It's moved in seconded to ratify the town administrator's appointment of, uh, Ann McManus as a temporary public health nurse for up to ten hours per week through March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four to cover for a temporary leave of absence, all in favor? Aye. Post, pass you, Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the discussion about Millis Housing Authority. All right, uh, last week, we, before we started discussing the potential of working with those, Millis Housing Authority to bring additional senior and family, um, uh, subsidized housing to Millis. This is different than the, um, affordable, the, where it's, uh, higher income threshold, this is pretty much fully subsidized, um, uh, small payment made by the, the person that lives in the units. Uh, right now, if I'm correct, we have about ten family and what was it?
I don't know how many.
It was forty or?
Forty?
I think I was, I, I thought in the forties, per senior. So, um, the way this works, I'm summarizing for anybody watching soon, no, we all know this, um, is, uh, um, we provide the land, the state provides the construction and staffs it and bills it and manages it. We're, we're done and land is provided. And, um, I think this is an important item for the town, I think we need to do something with it, I thought we'd kick it off at a few discussions about, number one, process to get land transferred and number two, start thinking of locations that may be considered and, uh, I'll start with process, if you don't mind.
Hmm.
Um, will it require a town meeting vote to do this, to transfer land if we decide? Yes, okay. So we'll take a meet, a vote at town meeting to transfer the land to the state. I thought it would, I was just making sure, and, uh, and, uh, next we'll move to, uh, and, and how long does something like this usually take, do we have any idea?
Um, a lot of it has to do with state processes, so, um, it could be six months, it could be a year and a half, depending on how quickly the state wants to move on.
I don't think it will be at the next town meeting, I thought.
No, probably not.
But I think it's something we start now, it could be six months to a year and a half to
Right.
get something together, because we really do want to put together the proper plan, right? And I'll open it up for conversation after that.
Well, so, so, Millis Housing is looking for a piece of land, right? And we own land, so I don't think we need to, at this point, start to look to buy land.
Right.
I think we should look at the pieces we already own because a lot of the citizens in town think we should start doing something with it as well. So, we have five or four pieces of land, five, so let, this is gonna be quick.
Yeah, no, it's worth it.
So we have Cassidy.
Yeah.
We have Gronn. Those two are the only two pieces that we own that are substantial, we own another hundred and something pieces, but they're little leftover pieces from subdivisions that you can't build anything on. They're the only ones without restrictions, so we also own the piece from Dewey, which is on the corner after Cassidy. If you're heading down Middle Sec, uh, right exchange, the banks off in the middle section, you bend the right to go to Nada.
Yep.
We own that piece on the corner, okay.
And that's just in hay right now.
Yes, yeah, that's from Dewey, they still live there. And that piece has a restriction on it to be open space, I have all the geeks here.
Right.
I need to bore you with anything that I looked at and it just, it has to be open space and historic preservation. I need to bore you with anything that I looked at. It has to be open space and historic preservation.
And Roderber's the same way, open space or conservation.
Which one's Roderber? On Pleasant Street.
We bought it my first year.
Which one?
It's near Tangerini.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not even counting that piece. Well, then there's another piece on Dyer. That's a corner piece.
Yeah, the center, the, yeah.
You know where, where I mean, that's Rockville, right?
Yeah, between Dyer and Ryzen.
That's supposed to be for a park.
That's going for sound.
Yes. It's small.
This has parks.
Yes. And then you have the piece with the Ellis Schools on. Which you could tear down and put something. That's supposed to be for educational purposes and Jay is still figuring out whether or not a three-hundred-year-old deed still stands. And then you have, um, I think that's it, right?
Yeah.
So you got, you, so you have two viables. You have Cassidy and you have Bronn. Now Cassidy is a huge piece, is huge. It goes way behind, I don't know if you know where Martin's key lives? And it connects all the way behind, but a lot of it is wet. Yeah, a lot of it is wet. It's almost kind of like a little stream going through it. And Bronn has a potential, I'm not sure, we're still trying to figure that out, river that bifurcates it, right? But those are the two pieces that you can honestly look at. Now this is just me personally. Bronn's tough for other reasons, but it's tough with that river. If it's a river, you're really limited. If it's not deemed a river,
Right.
then you got better luck. Um, personally, I like Cassidy. Why do I like Cassidy? Well, it's near the existing Milis Housing. And I think that, that you could possibly hold out a piece for seniors on it. I think it's big enough. So these, this is just me.
Yeah.
Um, the first step you'd have to take with Cassidy, the very first step, and you don't have to pay a million dollars. I don't recommend that we hire our person. I think we just hire a bondist. You have to hire a bondist.
What?
We have no idea what we have, zero. And it just has to be a, a preliminary delineation to see what we got. And then you'll, you'll kind of know everything.
Yeah. I'd like to do that with both properties. Go find out about that, uh, not Roderber.
I mean, I'm sorry, Bronn.
I brought Roderber up and.
And try to figure out if Bronn, if that is indeed a river.
Because there was a developer who was quite sure he could put forty homes.
Yeah, I have that plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was ballpark.
Right, exactly.
That's who we snatched.
I'm aware of that.
Yes. So, yes.
So I, I'd like to do that with both properties. I'd like to find out the cost for doing that, to find out what's tenable, you know, what's beautiful.
I agree.
Because, um, and at that point, then we can start involving community input, because we're gonna get a lot of community input. We're gonna be able to put back on both. There's people that wanna see Bronn look just like it is because of the bucks their house, they like fields. There's people who wanna see Cassidy look just like it is for the exact same reasons. So I think that at some level, um, housing for those in desperate need of housing, um, is an important goal. And I think we have to find the right property, but no matter what we pick or recommend or select, it has to pass town.
We also need to bring Candace back because there's been some question about whether or not we actually need this housing. So.
I'm listing it, ten units and
I know, but I'm just.
At the family side saying.
I know, but I'm just saying, we need to bring her back because the numbers are there and, um,
Yep. So do we think the first step should be getting, I, I don't, I don't know how much a delineation of what's buildable, what's not. Yeah. So let's see if we can get some, yeah, let's see if we can get that done for both. Yeah. And I don't think there's anything else we're looking at in town, quite honestly.
I agree. No, we need a vote to, uh, the town administrator to
I think we're gonna ask him to to listen and then we'll approve. Yeah. Yeah.
So really just looking for a, a local company to get us a refund quote.
And see if we can squeeze it into funds that we have available. Yeah, okay.
Nope, I like it.
All right. I think that's good. I think that gives us a start. I've had a few people approach me about this opposed to both of those. And so I feel that no bias one way or the other on this. But I did assure both of them there would be a process. I told them there would not be a decision made today. And I don't think a process can be had until we know what we could possibly do, because we just don't know enough.
Right.
Okay.
If you don't know what we don't know.
Now we have my favorite time of the year. It's like Christmas.
It is like Christmas.
License renewals.
Look at the paper we're using.
So I thought I'd make it really large, because I thought it would be easier. So this is.
Just, just my predecessor at work used to give our board spreadsheets on department budgets on this paper. Yeah, I give them a nice concise summary if they like.
Alcohol. Okay, so this, this list you're looking at, is everybody who is looking to renew a license, which is issued by the Select Board uh, for twenty twenty-four. Now, keep in mind, the board of health issues licenses for the following year and all of that. So a lot of that is, uh, comes into play here, but the Select Board license renewals, you have, uh, various types of alcohol licenses. You have things like automatic amusement, which would be like, um, you know, games, boom, that type of thing, bowling alley. The class two and class three. Class two is the purchase of secondhand, uh, motor vehicles. Class three is the purchase of secondhand motor vehicles, but also repurposing, rebuilding, selling the parts. Uh, common vitriol license is any place that serves food and has tables where you can put meat in them, spread around. Uh, entertainment license is big screen TVs or you're actually doing entertainment. Junk and metals dealer, looks like it sounds, uh, pool table license, which I don't know why we have, but we do, uh, retail marijuana and ski and trap shooting.
Pool table because it dates back to the twenties when it starts with P and rhymes with T and that's.
I know. Track shooting, so it is interesting.
Yeah.
The list, including the name of the business, their, um, DBA, manager of record, and their address. All of the licenses, um, all of Lee Meese businesses have completed everything they need, which includes providing super workers comp. They have to have made sure that they are up to date with their tax payments, all of that type of thing. So we vet through all of that first uh, before we allow this book to go through. Um, so everybody on this list is good to go with the exception of Tangerinis. And it's not that Tangerinis is not necessarily good to go. It's just that we have some other steps we have to go through because they don't open until the spring again. So if you can leave them off the list, um, I have a special vote interest that that I would recommend.
Then the fun part starts after the meeting with the signings.
So, okay.
Already, you may be doing that next week. We'll have to see if it turns into one of them.
Can you send them home on Christmas?
I would ask.
So what are we doing now?
We're going to vote to, I think there's a motion to vote to approve these all except for ten.
We're just gonna approve them all.
Unless you wanna read each, every one of them. Um, previous boards have made different decisions about that.
Okay. I know, but this one's gonna go.
I would like to read each one, all five columns, pause for a few moments for audience comments, and then continue onward. Let's prove the, I, I know, yeah. Let's approve the list in total, with the exception of Tangerinis, I think is.
Okay. So I make a motion that we approve this twenty twenty-four license renewal list in total, except for Tangerinis.
Okay, let's just take a minute, look it over if anybody sees anything they question or have any ques- I, I scanned it earlier and I didn't.
I'm gonna question what the license is about.
What are the numbers after like automatic, is the number of games?
Bowling alley. So automatic amusement, that means Ryan's Family Amusement says thirty-seven.
Games?
Games, I guess.
Okay.
The bowling alley, that's by alley. Strange, right?
Yeah.
Like I said, some of this stuff is crazy. I like the quantity of license. This takes back to, I don't even know.
You know what's weird is because I like how Steve and Sarah and
I didn't know that.
Inside anymore?
Yeah, they do.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They, they just do most of it outside. I didn't know they had a local license.
I'm gonna be taking this refrigerator for places to go in Milis.
Yeah, no kidding.
All right.
Well, it's big enough so you could breathe it, the glasses, right?
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, to approve this extensive list with the exception of Tangerini Spring Street Farm, which will be done as a separate item. Uh, all in favor? Okay. It is, uh, subject to final, uh, no, is that Tangerini's? Yeah, subject to the all those items as listed.
Yeah.
I think it'd start, even though the motions are different.
Okay.
Uh, then speaking to Tangerini, so Tangerini's, um, has several licenses, but the alcohol license, for an alcohol license, you have to have an inspection prior to that. Because Tangerini's has a tent, uh, in the third month to do functions and that has to be inspected, but of course it's not up right now. So what we do is hold off until right before, um, and then the fire chief and the building official will go over and just make sure everything looks good to go before we approve, um, that. So it'll be pending that piece, you'll see in the motion. It's also pending, we now have a memorandum of agreement we're working on. I think we are at, uh, a memorandum of understanding with them. Um, and this is, um, because they're located in a residential zone, so in order to actually sell food and operate a restaurant, um, they have to prove that they sell a certain amount of their what is it? Turn amount. Yes, yes.
Fifty percent of their product has to be locally sourced.
Right.
Um, in order to qualify for that exemption.
So this, this will, they have to submit some information. They will sign this every year. They can't do that until February typically because they have to close the books on the previous year and show that that year that they were at that point. Once they do that, they sign this and like, why do you worry? Uh, I, I know, we didn't do the inspection come spring and then they will get their license. So that's how this is written, is it's pending those two.
And this will be repeating every year. Yeah.
Okay.
And it's just the way the business runs. There's nothing.
Okay, so I'm making this first motion.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Go ahead.
The second one.
Yes.
I move the board to approve some renewal of an all-alcohol license for Calendewear twenty twenty-four for Tangerini's farm, subject to final inspection of the premises to include the temporary tent structure by the building official and fire chief and to the execution of an annual memorandum of understanding with the town, which demonstrates compliance with an agricultural exemption as special, as specified in said memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the renewal of an all-alcohol license for Calendewear twenty twenty-four for Tangerini's farm, subject to final inspection of premises to include temporary tent structure by the building uh, official and fire chief, subject to the execution of the annual memorandum of understanding of the town, which demo- demonstrates compliance with agricultural exemption as specified in said MOU. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
Right. And then I did separate this out because this is not a renewal. So as, um, I'm sure you're aware, Halapa, um, sold their business. And they sold it to a new company called Cali Retos, which I, I did not spell correctly on your agenda. I'm sorry, sorry. It's actually Cali Retos. Uh, and Cali Reto is just looking for a common vitriol license. They, uh, Halapas did have an alcohol license. Cali Reto is not doing the alcohol license to start, they may eventually. Um, so what we do is if you look in the packet, this is our common vitriol license application. Uh, we have changed this over the years to be far more comprehensive. It used to be not as comprehensive. Um, and so we go through all these steps and make sure it's what we want. We want your business in town, but we want good, strong, um, healthy businesses. Um, so we make sure that they are reputable and whatnot. Um, so they have jumped through all the hoops for us and they are ready to go for their common vitriol. The only thing this is, and it's entirely up to you, the only thing they have not done yet, we have gotten all their approvals from the board of health, um, is, uh, Mr. G M Petro said that they have some signs that they have not come in and gotten a sign from it for. So you can still approve the common vitriol license, or you could approve it pending final approval of their signed licenses to keep them honest. I, that's up to you.
All the signs up?
There are signs up. Which should not really cover them.
Okay.
But I, I think that, it wasn't purposeful. I didn't think they'd realize. They've been kind of walking them through the process.
They serving now, or they?
They can't serve until they get this common vitriol license. And this will be effective January one. So really, they can't do anything anyway.
I move that the board acting as a local licensing authority approves a common vitriol license effective January first, twenty twenty-four for Caloritos Mexican Grill LLC DBA. Caloritos Burritos Grill located nine twenty-nine Main Street, Milis, subject to obtaining the necessary sign?
Permit. Approval of necessary time, application and approval. Yeah. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board acting as local licensing authority uh, approves a common vitriol license effective January first, twenty twenty-four for Caloritos Mexican Grill LLC DBA. Cali Reto's Burritos Grill located at nine twenty-nine Main Street, Milis, pending final approval and application for a sign uh, place, the sign permits. The signage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
That's good, yeah. Uh, so this is a professional service agreement. We're looking for the board's approval of professional service agreement between the town of Milis and the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management, which is part of UMass Boston, uh, the Public Management Consultants, um, for a comprehensive human resources review to include review of shared services with the school. So as you know, I'm the first ever, I guess, official human resources, uh, manager. And as we've gotten things going, we did see that there was a grant being offered to the community compact. Uh, we were, we applied for and were awarded the grant for forty-five thousand dollars to do a study of our human resources services. Uh, we're doing some things well, some things could get tweaked. And we certainly want to continuous, you know, constantly try to improve our communication and, and the whole process with the school. So this will bring an outside party in to really do a, a, a good look at this. So this is really exciting. Um, I know the woman actually, I, I've worked with her at some other things before. Um, through UMass Boston, she's fabulous. So.
Well-known girl.
Yeah, she's well-known across the state and she's great.
Doing this work for about forty years.
Exactly. So she's fabulous. So you can probably work with her too, Mary. We will probably meet her eventually, but so this is just to approve.
We will also be asking the board to authorize the town administrator to sign on the, the document.
Yes, thanks, God.
Okay. I move that the board approves the professional service agreement between the town of Milis and the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management of UMass Boston for comprehensive human resources review, including shared services with the school for an all-inclusive fee of forty-five thousand dollars to be paid through a community compact grant and to authorize the town administrator to sign, um, the professional service agreement?
On behalf of the board.
On behalf of the board. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve the professional service agreement between the town of Milis and Edward J. Collins Center Junior, uh, Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management of UMass Boston for com- comprehensive human resource review, including shared services with the school for an all-inclusive fee of forty-five thousand dollars to be paid through a community compact grant and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously.
I think Mr. G M Petro is late for the license piece.
Oh.
But that's okay. So I just, so we have, they approved all the license with Tangerini's with the stipulations that we had talked about, and then they approved the Caloritos um, common vitriol license pending, um, application and approval of their sign permit.
Can you tell them to take the signs out if they have one?
Yes. Want me to tell them or you gotta tell them?
If you tell them.
Okay.
I would say, yeah, Matt, they're proving you gotta take the signs out, they got permits.
What signs do you mean? Do you mean the?
No signs to that permit.
And the big flags?
You got the, they, they, uh, they got a big banner sign. They got a couple of, you know, waving flags.
What's the banner and the flags?
So what are the signs they got up? They're gonna take a banner couple.
They are up fixed to the building. Okay.
I'm seeing the building.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
I need to get any more complaints about signs.
Not complaining.
Anybody on the board, are you?
Not those signs.
Yeah.
But we can resolve it. Speaking of which, speaking of which, more than one way to resolve. I think I became and took that one, so I threw it away. But there's another one at the end of Spring and Village. His son, that guy, he never came. You think he's gonna come?
Oh, yeah, the dumpster guy, the junk. I called him on the phone.
Yeah, call him again.
I said, hey, if you don't come and get it, you're signing five to seven days. Throw him in the trash.
Yeah, call him again.
All right. I says, how much do they cost you? Thirty-five bucks. So much for thirty-five bucks in the trash. He didn't care. So I'm gonna pick him up and throw him in the trash.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna call him.
No.
He don't care.
I don't care.
He don't, he really.
The end of, uh, Plain Street and Village.
That one.
Yes. Thank you.
Kind of go look on the sign. All right.
Thank you, Sam.
All right, next item up.
Oh, that's me. Sorry. Uh, so it's all me today. The whole, the whole show. Uh, so Carrie Vera, who is the owner and manager of, uh, Victory Lane here in town, is looking to extend the hour. She, she usually goes for this every year. It's just extend the hours till one o'clock on New Year's Eve. So it's officially, I guess, on one-one, but, um, and I did, um, reach out to the police chief, who said, yes, they have done this before. I don't have any issue with it. On a one-time occasion.
Okey-dokey. I move that the board approves the request from Carrie Barrett, owner of Victory Lane, to extend the closing time on New Year's Eve. That would be one-one twenty-four to one AM. Second. Well done.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the request from Carrie, uh, Barrett, owner of Victory Lane, to extend the closing time for New Year's Eve on one-one twenty-four till one AM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is, are any other restaurants, bars, anything looking to do that also, or is it just?
So it's something that they have to request if they want to change the hours or short time, we need that.
All right.
Yes.
All right, next item up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, as a follow-up to the board's meeting, uh, joint meeting you had with the Medway Select Board on November twenty eighth. I recommend the board take a formal vote to authorize. Need to work with the town Medway to research potential regional services between the two towns. The Medway Select Board voted to work with the town of Millis, um, for this purpose at their recent meeting on December.
I think that's a real good meeting we had there.
I did too.
I thought there was a lot of potential for a lot of different areas. So I think this is something that's worth absolutely pursuing.
Yep. Uh, I move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to work with the town of Medway to research potential regional ser- services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the board vote to authorize the town administrator to work with town of Medway to research potential regional services. Um, personally, I think this is something that's just kind of a standing request, I think this is great work that can be done and. Medway's a good start, if there's anybody else who's interested, we're all ears. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass unanimously.
I could just make a quick comment before we move on from that, um. Something on social media had come up where, uh, Medway posted about their electronic voting and their transponders for that and stuff like that. And some of the comment was made, why can't we have electronic voting? And we can have electronic voting if we want to pay for it. So that's the other potential, um, thing that maybe we could talk to Medway about, if we did adopt electronic voting for the same company, maybe we could share, uh, devices. Or something to that effect.
Yeah, way back when, I, I think it's worth talking to them again, but way back when we had that meeting with the town, uh, when we had that committee that studied town meeting procedure. We found the towns were unwilling to share because the town meetings are all clumped together and they don't want us breaking their stuff.
Yeah.
So we're stealing it or whatever. So, um, so I'm, I'm all in favor of discussing it with them, but, um, it probably is going to be an issue where we. Much like the back truck where they want to own our own.
Yeah.
On a much smaller scale. Okay, next item up.
All right, um, so as part of our process to, um. Collect all the pieces of the different collective bargaining agreements together, um. We, you have that updated, uh, compiled compilation of all the MOAs and MOUs with the police union. Um, into one full document, this, this document does not actually change anything in the current, um, collective bargaining agreements with the union. It merely puts all of those provisions under one document. Um, so we'd be asking the board this, this afternoon to approve the updated document, um, which the police union again. Does not contain any actual changes to the provisions of current agreement.
And, and just to add, this, this document has been given to the police union, they did review it and they were, they said, yes, they, it looks like it's fine with them, so. If they approve it, then they will also sign.
This will make life easier for all of us at the next level of issues.
Much easier starting.
For those that are watching, I'm saying, I hope somebody's watching them, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, then, um, right now, whenever we do a union contract, it's leaking through ten. Fifteen years of stuff.
Yes.
Sometimes you have ten, just ten to twelve documents.
Because, um, article whatever in this was amended at the negotiations in twenty fifteen and, yes, that, so now we have a. Clean copy, we can start over again, this is no changes to the benefits or policies. All right.
Okay, I make a motion to board approve and sign the full integrated agreement between the town of Millis. And the MA Coalition of Police Local one seventy one from July first, twenty twenty two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that, uh, the board approve and sign the full integrated agreement between the town of Millis and the Mass Coalition of Police Local one seventy one. From July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You said July first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty two.
Twenty two.
Good one.
Thank you. Madam, pause. All right.
That's you. Oh, my God.
You've got something?
I'm going to check, I've been waiting for two weeks for this, well, I've been waiting on it.
Go first then.
All right, I'm, I'm going for it, so, hmm, let's go in order.
Okay.
Uh, December fifth cemetery, my new favorite, you already told me. Um, so they're, um, they're going to raise, they're going to raise rates. For certain things, burials and stones and whatever, so they're working on that. Uh, they're waiting for Jim McKay to come back with some costs, so it can maybe translate a little bit to what the actual. New fees will be, and they're looking at rule changes. They have problems with people. Um, putting flowers like all around the stone and on other people's maybe, so they got a whole thing going on, that was fun. And then on twelve twelve, I went to school committee, it was like two and a half hours, they did not talk about the budget, which is why I went there, but they did have a. Gentleman there from IT that talked for two hours about all the. New screens he'd like to get for the school. And they raised their rates, three percent on the after-school, the kindergarten. And the third one.
Wow.
Three percent, and they think that will cover, and then on twelve fourteen, I had two meetings. Throwing that out there.
Go ahead.
CRPC, my sewer, which, I, I mean, it's not a lot happening there, but two more houses came on here, but again. Uh, they're at the Glen, I don't think there's been one hookup.
Right.
Not one that we have not accounted for in our, just.
Since the moratorium was lifted, right.
Right.
Um, but I'm looking forward because Jim McKay, that, that, they're supposed to come, right? To a meeting and give us a report?
Yeah, they are, yeah, we'll get that scheduled.
That'd be good, yeah, and then on.
Yeah.
And then on twelve fourteen at night, I had the CPC, the Community Preservation. Which, uh, which was great, which was great, I do want to say a couple of things about.
I think that's a perfect name.
I know you say that.
I say that, I know.
Did you go?
But I haven't been notified of any meetings.
I know, because they think it's me.
Well, let's take that. Let's take that fun away from her, her wedding.
If you want to start to go, you're very welcome, but anyway, it was, um. It was good because you, we have to, we have to look at the list.
We'll look at the list again.
See.
I don't know how that happened.
Who got it? But, um.
So it's playing the role of Aaron.
Camille thinks it's me, anyway, I took some, I, I took the thing, because I wanted to tell you what I did, but. What they did before. Oh, they came and, they, David Werner, who's the commission person there for Millis, he came and gave a presentation. I'm, I'm just saying. The amount of work that these people do that are on this commission, that they physically do with their own equipment, we're talking about Stephen McGinnis. Nate Martinsky, this David Werner, they're out there, they're out there in the.
Yeah.
On their hands and knees, replacing, um, the boardwalks. Removing dead trees, reforming, I just think, I just think it's incredible, anyway, he came in, he gave a great presentation with before and after pictures. Of the boardwalks especially.
Oak Grove?
Yeah, Oak Grove. Um, it just is, it's just incredible, the amount of work that they do. I don't know where you get, where you get that, you know what I mean?
Lucky.
Lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've always done a lot of work over there.
They just, and these, these pictures, you, you know. The, the, everything needed to be redone and they did it on the cheap and they got some. Um, they got a little bit of help from conservation where they didn't have to do so much and spend a million dollars and just doing a good job. Do you want that one too? Oh, cool. I mean, oh, that's the one you want, do you think so?
I, I'm not that I.
Because he had, he believed.
Yes, you had it last year. Okay, I believe I was assigned to it.
I will make it clear that any of mine are open for grabbing right now.
Would you have a reference? You don't have a reference?
All right, awesome, now, Dave. All right, so I went to four meetings.
I went to one.
Oh.
I went to the Economic Development Committee.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Important one.
That was a good one, and, uh, the discussion was mostly around forming a downtown business group slash chamber of commerce type thing to. Advocate, work with and, uh, promote businesses in Millis, um. And. Things like that. Um, there were a lot of ideas for funding it, whether the town funds it, whether the town earmarks a certain. Percentage of the taxes the business is paid to fund it, whether we privatize it, whether the business is paid dues to be in it. And we're towns uninvolved, and we left it at, there's more discussion to be had. So we're going to look at options, there's a few proposals that are going to float out, there is a grant. That, um, may pay for the study of this, but there was discussion of whether we should even bother to accept said grant, um. If there's no desire to do this by the businesses, in other words, why take seventy five thousand of state money if we're not going to do anything with it, except study it and put it on a shelf? We also talked about bus transportation for, um, uh, Millis to the train station. Going forward. Um, Medway is, comes down Village Street and they might be able to pick up someplace on Village. But that would require us putting in a, uh, parking spot, probably at Braun. And there was, and that would require lighting and that would require a lot of other things that we weren't sure. Because once you get to Braun, you're about more than halfway to that, you know, you're, you're almost at the train station, having done that drive way too much. So, um, so there was a little conversation of that, but that's pretty much where it went to.
What did they think that the money from a business association would be used for?
Uh, Medway, Medfield has a couple of days a year where they do business activities downtown, mostly when I'm trying to drive through it at five thirty or six in the evening. Um.
Tables and tables.
Yes.
Show you where?
Yes, that was one suggestion, so I just saw more interference with my commute, but, no, there was, uh, there were some good ideas. And also advocating to bring in other businesses to downtown, fill some of the spots, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm, we're waiting to see more proposals and more ideas, so that was delegated to a smaller subcommittee to work on. All right.
Owen? I got nothing.
You want to add something?
Something.
Yeah. And we're going to.
What's the night? School building committee.
Okay. We're saying our finance committee.
No.
I think we should give her two cemetery committee meetings just to make it before you stolen. All right, next item up is approval of draft minutes.
I make a motion that the board approves the draft minutes from twelve four twenty three, as written, second.
Wow, that's like last meeting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, uh, motion made to approve the draft minutes from twelve four twenty twenty three, as written, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. Last item.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting that the board approve the water and sewer commitment for November of. Two thousand twenty three, the amount of one thousand three hundred and six dollars and sixty two cents.
Uh, I make a motion that the board approves the water sewer commitment for November twenty twenty three, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the water sewer commitment for November twenty twenty three, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passing unanimously. All right, um, we will be adjourning to executive session for the sole purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining.
Uh, with the district.
We'll have to come back into session.